Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Administration and Finance and Recreation and Parks Committee meeting for April 9th, 2024. The councilmembers present: Mayor Kurt Wilson, Councilmember Christine Hall, Councilmember Alan Sells, Councilmember David Johnson, Councilmember Sarah Beeson, Councilmember Chi Lee Hills, Councilmember William Moreland. I'm Brandy Knighton, City Administrator, along with David Davidson, City Attorney, and Michelle Miller, Executive Assistant to the Council. The purpose of committee meetings are for city departments to convey information to Mayor and City Council, and to discuss initiatives listed on the published agenda, as well as provide updates of vital information essential to the operation of city government. By ordinance, the committee consists of the Mayor and Council, and the City Administrator, who serves as Chair of Committee Meetings. This is a public meeting, but not a public hearing. And while the public is certainly welcome to attend, we do not take public comments or questions during committee meetings. Public comments or questions are received at the regular City Councilmember meetings on the second and fourth Monday of each month, as well as fifth Monday in open forum. We do encourage residents to engage our online platforms, and if you have any questions or need information, please reach out to our staff, talent in the city. We'd also encourage everyone in the viewing audience to visit the city website for meeting events and departmental information. The city web service portal is a mechanism to report issues or concerns, and also for a calendar of events. Please visit Roswell365.com for a calendar of events. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the March 12th, 2024 Administration and Finance and Recreation and Parks Committee meeting. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Councilmember Moreland, second by Councilmember Hills. Any further discussion? All in favor? It passes unanimously. I would... All right, the next item, I'm sorry, item number two, under Administration, consideration for the Mayor and/or City Administrator to sign a contract with Georgia Interlocal Risk Management Agency in an amount not to exceed $1,249,294. Mr. Davidson?
Thank you. This is for property casualty and management liability insurance for the city for a coverage period of May 1st, 2024 through May 1st, 2025. The additional amounts on this are $78,750 for cyber insurance through either Travelers or Great American Insurance Group, $5,000 for drone liability, $5,000 for flood insurance, for a total not to exceed $1,338,044. This is approximately 70% increase from last year. It's a 6.8% increase total for a total dollar amount of $85,642 more than last year. With that being said, we do have an employee count increase of 12%. The property values have gone up $36 million, or 15%. Our budget has gone up $14.5 million, and we have 90 items, not... I can't say vehicles, because they're not all vehicles. Some of them are trailers and other items that we insure also. But we have 90 more items being insured also under our automobile policy. We recommend moving forward with this to council.
Mayor Wilson?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, David. Just one question for the record, or one stipulation. What are we... Would request... Obviously, we have $1 million currently, I believe, underneath cyber insurance?
This actually increases it to $3 million.
To $3 million? So I would like, before this probably comes to council, for us to exhaust a full review of what we need to do on cyber insurance, obviously in relation to obviously bringing the IT department in, and perhaps raising that amount significantly with certain provisos.
Okay. Thank you, sir. That will be taken under advisement, definitely. Any other questions, comments related to this item? Yes, Councilmember Hall.
Just a quick question. I remember last year, I think you talked about the amount of savings we get through GRMA. Is that something that we shop frequently, or...
We do. Last time, it was a guaranteed two-year level term. GRMA has pretty much an average increase this year of 15%. Ours was only 7%, which was in this market. I think it's a very good savings for the city.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments regarding this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hills. Any further discussion to move this item forward? Seeing none, all in favor? All right. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item number three, under Economic Development, consideration to awarded Economic Development Consulting Services Contract. That would be Mr. Connolly and Mr. Leatherman.
What you have before you tonight, and I'll run through a handful of the details associated with our Economic Development Consulting Services Contract. I put an RFQ out available to the public, had three respondents. Before you tonight, you have a staff recommendation of awarding a contract to SEER Group. That contract is included in your packet. It's a not-to-exceed $2 million amount threshold, but I want to clarify exactly what that means. This is a services contract, and it allows an expenditure authority up to $2 million only if what... With what's approved in our budgeting process. So the amount that we can expend on that contract is limited in our budgeting process. Right now, for example, we have roughly about $400,000 available in our Economic Development Strategy Budget authorized in this current fiscal year. So for example, if we were to be activating this contract in our current budget year, that contract limit would be the total budgeted amount of $400,000, assuming we were going to activate that entirely to the SEER Group contract. As we went through... Sorry, go, stay right there if you would. Back one, there you go. We had three proposals: SEER Group, Michael Baker, and the Research Associates. The evaluation criteria is also included in your packet that we went through as a team, the management approach, experience on similar projects, professional qualifications, and references. That's how they were all ranked in order to have your... And our final recommendation with this here contract. I just wanted to also note that we have requested, within this contract, the City Council to be authorized to administer task orders up to $100,000. Also associated just with this contract, as we've talked before, we are in the process of reviewing our procurement policies, as well as our City Administrator's delegated authority. As part of this contract, we're requesting the $100,000, and then, once we have those new policies before you, we will marry the language between what's authorized in a potential future delegated authority with Mr. Knighton and this contract itself. So if those amounts do change, we will shore that up. So this is essentially an interim solution while we're in the process of reviewing the City Administrator's delegated authority. As we look at this contract, just from a staff's perspective, I think about what do we need from an economic development front, and what does this contract provide for us? We're looking for a suite of services to be able to help propel the city of Roswell forward from an economic development perspective. That includes, perhaps, support for the city in contract negotiations. It includes support for the city for real estate negotiations. It includes support for the city for, perhaps, master planning or small-track master planning related to our economic development strategy that is currently under development. All of those services are examples of what could be issued in a task order with SEER Group if this contract is awarded. And we would do that on a project-by-project basis as we are moving through our economic development strategy. A lot of that strategy is being developed as we speak, and so this is a very dynamic contract that we will be working our way through. That is the reason that we're looking for the additional delegated authority under Mr. Knighton's signature, so that we can move projects at really the market pace. So at times, we have to react to the market. We have to react to what's happening in the marketplace, and not always does our committee and council process move at that quick of a pace. So I'll leave that open for any other questions that you may have related specifically to this contract, of course, our economic development strategy, and the value that we have associated with this piece here before you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Leatherman. Yes, Councilmember Sells.
So the task orders that you described, let's go through some of those.
Sure.
How would... What would be the deliverable that you would expect out of such a task order as the, let's say, the design or assistance with negotiation? What would that look like?
So I think the negotiation task order can be a difficult one to describe and see what we actually see on the deliverable side. So in this case, we would look at a project-by-project specific. So if we're talking about a specific development, we could issue a task order associated with the negotiation with the property owners for a future project design. That would be on an hour-by-hour basis that the consultant at that time would log and report back to us on their time and materials that they spent in that negotiation process. So it would be a project-by-project basis in that example. I'll give you a different example that I know is likely on the horizon, as we start to look at how are we developing the right strategy for parking deck and parking deck operations? The analysis for how we would go about, perhaps, long-term leasing certain parking spaces in future parking decks, we could and would issue a task order for a consultant, in this case, if it was SEER Group, to develop that type of analysis on behalf of the city, so that we could understand how and the value of those parking spaces over time, and how the return on investment would be for the city, and what we would charge potential long-term tenants of that parking deck.
So those would be hourly rate kind of activities you would see?
Correct. So some of it could be hourly rate, and some of it could be just a task order basis with a deliverable. It's going to depend on kind of the project. They'll use a master plan, for an example. A master plan task order for a small-track development would specifically be described as a time and materials basis, where they would deliver that master plan based on agreed-upon amount, and that deliverable would be the master plan. And that's what we would have tangibly in hand and delivered to the city.
Will there be any success fees, such as an investment banking-type fee for closing a transaction?
That is not contemplated at this time as the way that we've defined the contract.
So it's primarily time and material?
Or task-specific, yes. Bound by a specific task and deliverable.
What about limitations in the contract, such as non-circumvention, or non-poaching of employees, or any other other stuff that goes along with these kinds of consulting contracts? Any of that?
We don't have... I'd have to double-check. We generally don't have protections around employees and poaching of employees associated with a contract with the city.
But you could add those.
We can.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Hall.
Sorry, go ahead.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. So in private industry terms, this... I look at this more as an MSA, a Master of Service Agreement, and each one of the state... The items that we'd be requesting would be a statement of work. So we would basically ask for a statement of work for a particular project in a SOW, and that would be built, you know, built under this Master of Service Agreement. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah, the challenge is, as Councilmember Sells pointed out, is in the statement of work, when you're dealing with negotiations, it's... Can be difficult to define a specific deliverable in that negotiation process if the negotiations fail or aren't successful.
Thank you.
Most of those are success fee-based, typically, not in government, perhaps.
Fair enough.
Have you... Have we ever done a success fee kind of arrangement, David?
No.
I don't think so, no, sir. And I think it's actually a really clever idea, because I think it makes more sense, and it's a really good incentive. And to your point, the way that I understood, a lot of the deliverables would be more along the task line than on the billing, the hourly billing line. That's the way I kind of saw this happening, was here's your project, get it done.
Right.
Like, more than, let's chink up the hours.
Correct.
All right. Council...
So, sorry.
Councilmember Beeson.
Going over to the contract terms, the terms say that it's a five-year contract. Is that five years total, or is it an annual contract up for renewal each year for five years?
The way that our contracts work, and I can pull the page numbers, essentially, it's a... It renews automatically every year unless we notice the contractor that we're not renewing it. So essentially, it's five one-year term contracts.
And automatically renews without council approval?
It does.
And then, for the cancellation, is it only during the anniversary of that contract that we would be up for cancellation, or can it be canceled at any point in time?
Let me double-check, and I know David Davidson's looking through it.
So 30-day notice. Got it.
Sorry. Yes. All right. Further questions, comments? Yes, Councilmember Sells, yes.
Sorry. I'm just reading.
It's okay? Yeah, yeah.
So the 30 days, is it like a negotiating period, or what happens? Is there a trigger date? Is the council alerted that it's 30 days and we're in the window, or what happens?
So the 30-day notice is, at any time during the contract cycle, we can issue a 30-day notice of intent to cancel the contract.
Okay, so it's not tied to the anniversary at all?
So the renewal is tied to an anniversary. So the renewal right now, renewals... Renews on the fiscal cycle.
Is there a penalty if you do not cancel within some renewal period? Like, in other words, is there a payout of the year if you cancel after the turn of the calendar, or what?
No, because it's a Master of Services Agreement, as Councilmember Hall said, and it would be task order basis, so it's not an ongoing billable hours. We need to actually... So this contract could stay latent without any... Yeah, forever, without any task... If we don't issue a task order, nothing has happened.
Got it. Got it. I understand.
Jeff, sorry.
Yes, Mayor Wilson.
Did I interrupt anybody? I'm sorry. Mr. Chair... I mean, thanks. Jeff, so if there are some suggestions to add, and some good ideals...
Yeah.
If this comes out of committee successfully, are you able to amend this? Like, for example, if you can put an incentive clause in the contract, and the vendor is agreeable to that, or does... Or can you just change it before it goes to council? And the council... Say, if the council sends it out of committee tonight...
Right.
And it comes up for committee, comes up to council in two weeks...
Right.
And there are some changes and revisions that need to be added to it. You can do that, correct?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Davidson in the procurement process to hold me accountable here.
So it can, provided it doesn't interfere with the scope that was bid out? The scope of work. So as long as it doesn't interfere with the scope of work, but if there are some ideals that might perhaps enhance and improve the process, the council has the right to do that, correct?
Yes. Again, to Mr. Davidson's point, as long as we're not changing the scope that was bid to all parties, and we're working on contract language.
Contract language, incentives, punishments...
Correct.
Punitive measures, et cetera, right? As long as it doesn't change the scope of the project. And I think one of the things is probably... You probably... You can't say this enough, and Christine said it. This is an MSA. So just because, number one, the money has to be budgeted and approved by the council through the budgetary process on an annual basis.
Yes, sir.
Currently, that's under ED. Currently, for the FY '24 budget, there's $400,000 currently budgeted for economic development, which I do not believe any of it's been spent this year. Daryl, correct me if I'm wrong.
A little bit has.
A little bit has, but basically, your budgets... So even though this is a $2 million, basically, MSA per year, right? Zero dollars get spent unless it's budgeted to the annual process, number one.
Correct.
So there... Just because this contract exists doesn't mean dollars get spent.
Correct.
The second thing is, is what you're asking for this is, you're asking for something that's new and oncoming, is that you're asking for the City Administrator's authority to improve and to grow from $25,000 to $100,000 based upon annual budget-approved expenditures, right?
Yes.
And so that could fall underneath this MSA. So say you had a $60,000 contract. Currently, if it falls under the MSA and the scope of work, then the City Administrator could approve that $60,000 expenditure, as long as it was underneath the MSA.
Correct. Long as it fit the scope of work.
Fit the scope of work. Exactly.
Yep.
And that's limited up to $2 million per year.
Correct.
Correct? But it first has to be... It has to come from actual approved budgets, annual budget. There's... You can't make up the money just because you want it.
So that's where the process starts. The contract exists, as you described it. Essentially, it could exist in an unfunded capacity for the next five years until council appropriates the money in its annual budget process for ED-related purposes.
And then, to that end, if it's over... If the council approves this, and it's over 100, it's $101,000, right? It has to go to the council, even...
That is correct.
For another check in balance.
Yes.
If the council so approves this in committee, and then so approves it in council, what they're asking for, just for a distinction, is currently, there's a $25,000 signature limit on the City Administrator. Through this MSA, that limit would go from 25 to 100.
Correct.
That's a distinction. But if it's over 100, it still has to come back to council, even though it's been already approved in the budget process.
Correct.
Councilmember Sells? I'll make sure to get you Beeson.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Councilmember Beeson.
Councilmember Sells points about the contract terms. Do we also have an NDA in place within the contract terms?
Give me a minute, just, and I'll double-check. What's your second question?
Second one, do we also have a right to exclusivity? So for example, if we're working on something related to economic development, and we're bringing America's greatest football team to Roswell, is there any contract terms or clauses that would necessitate them working only with the city of Roswell, and not with any other cities within the metropolitan area that could easily compete with us for the same economic development option?
That's a non-circ... That's what a non-circumvention clause is.
Oh, I thought you were talking about poaching employees.
That's separate.
Okay, so you're talking about poaching projects.
Non-circum... The inability to... To parallel-track us is exactly what that's about.
Perfect, okay. So, and we're working on seeing if those terms are in there, you said?
Yeah, and just in my backflip through, I didn't see a non-compete that was specifically called out in the contract language, unless Mr. Davidson has any. And I think, as you described, those are items that...
There's not a non-circumvention clause in there.
No, those are items that we can negotiate into the contract between now and then, because it doesn't fundamentally change the scope of work that was put out. It's just we're dealing with the contract language at this time. And so I can work with our City Attorney on adding both of those items in before it comes to council. So I have the non-compete, non-circumvention, and then also, we can have the NDAs. We're currently using NDAs and different mechanisms within the city, and it's becoming a more, I would say, frequent business practice of the city.
Okay, further questions? Any?
I'm sure I'll think of something else. Keep going.
Further? All right. Councilmember Beeson?
Alan Lux. If you could clarify, so you covered... Could you go back to the scope of work side? I think it's your first slide.
Yeah, second slide there.
Second slide?
Sorry, one more forward. This one?
No, these are the responses. Maybe it was the last one that you just showed. Yes, so experience and expertise in the following areas of economic development strategy, redevelopment planning and implementation, public-private partnerships, and community engagement. Looking at that scope of work, what is different in this scope compared to what SEER currently provides? And then additionally, what is different from this scope of work from what we currently have in-house? I realize that our Economic Development Department is relatively new, and by department, I mean, Daryl. It's one person. So I'm well aware of the fact that it is one person, but I also know that in 2022, so prior to me being on council, it was a large effort by Mayor and Council at the time to try to support economic development efforts here in the city by creating a department internally. So is there a reason why... My secondary question, in addition to the scope, is there's a reason why we're seeking outside of the city and going with another consultant, as opposed to bringing these efforts with a full-time hire in-house?
Fair question. I'll start with the first part of the current contract, and I'll also defer to Mr. Davidson on any other commentary associated with specifically around land negotiation, land development within the city. So there were some very specific parameters around the existing SEER contract. What we were looking for from this contract was which a much broader scope under a Master of Services Agreement. As you can see, the four bullet points there on strategy, redevelopment planning, public-private partnerships, and community engagement. Those items aren't... Maybe a small component of some of the work that SEER is doing, but that's going to be specifically limited to his current scope around the land and land acquisition, as well as the other component, which I'm drawing a blank right now on. Is there a second component to that contract?
It was the entertainment district.
Thank you, the entertainment district. So those were the two boundaries of this current contract. As we look at economic development from the city's perspective, we're going to need a lot of tools, essentially, in our toolbox, and it's... It can be difficult to hire individual staff members that represent all areas of this contract, and have them in-house and actively working on projects on a regular basis and on a full-time basis. And so what this service agreement does is it allows us to surge when we need a lot of help and support on specific projects, also allows us to contract, in some cases, when we don't need a lot of economic development support or work happening, because perhaps we're in the design phase, and we don't need the support of an ED team. And so from a... From just a logistical perspective, I believe, in this case, a Master of Services Agreement allows that expansion and contraction of services, when we don't quite know what the exact right model for an ED team on a sustainable model looks like for the city. Obviously, we have Daryl, a great member of our ED team, currently the one-man show associated with ED here. We also have a tremendous amount of work of tying economic development into our other departments: community development, planning and zoning, recreation and parks, public safety. And that is a component of Daryl's work now as well, is how are we tying our ED strategy across all areas of the city? And that's why it's important to have a staff member on the team that's completely focused on economic development. But again, we have the services of a consultant that can allow us to expand and contract and target specific areas of the private sector that we may need support on. There could be some projects where we need a lot of legal and contract support. There could be some contracts where we need a lot of design support, because we're working on master planning design of community or nodes within our community, and we can pick and choose the expertise from this Master of Services Agreement to fit our needs for that project at a specific time.
Councilmember Sells?
No? Okay. So there is an existing contract. Does this supersede that contract? Is this additive to this contract? Or is it... Is that contract going to be folded under this MSA?
So do you want to speak to the existing contract and functionally how that works?
Basically, out of money under that previous contract. We're basically out of money under the previous contract.
So does this... So does it... It's a dead letter, or does it die on its terms?
It'll die on its terms.
It dies on its terms. Okay, thank you. And, you know, to your comment about, you know, specifically saying what he's going to do and why this isn't in-house, I mean, what we're really talking about here, I think, is somewhat unique in government, and that is, this is a broad-shouldered investment banking approach to transactions that we're trying to do. That's what we're doing here. And so it's very, very hard. I get the MSA, completely get the MSA. So I'm sorry, I was a little miffed, because I hadn't heard about this till tonight.
It's okay.
So that annoyed me. But in general, you know, doing this through an MSA and saying, here is a piece of work, and we value that outcome of that piece of work strategically, in relationship to what we're trying to do as a city, we say, okay, well, there are, you know, I call them black swan-type individuals with the right phone number at the right time to accomplish the right transaction that has to be done. That is very, very hard to find, very, very hard to have on staff. You're not going to have that on staff, and so you have to have some mechanism to do that and to award that. And so a statement of work where you're saying, okay, on a success fee basis, you close this deal, here's what's in it for you, and the city wins, and the taxpayers win, and that's the way that that... That's not at all uncommon. There are some things I'd like to see in this contract, based on my experience, and you guys may also have done M&amp;A, I don't know, but that kind of thing is not... This is not uncommon, what we're doing here. It's just a little broader than typical. A typical mandate is one transaction. You hire somebody for one transaction. We're integrating a skill set in a series of transactions with a series of objectives, and saying, this person has, this group has, some unique skills that are important to us strategically. That's what we're doing. Is that fairly put?
Mayor Wilson? Mayor Wilson?
I, I think it's incredibly well put, Alan. I think, um, can't say it better than that. I mean, we have talked, uh, at length about economic development strategy. When we, when we campaigned in 2021 and when we came in an office in 2022, we created the four pod strategy, kind of like from a large scale. And this is a perfect example where this comes into play. Well, I'm, I'm going to explain this from my perspective. So we came in and we created the four pod strategy for the city. And then we went out and hired a really good master planner, a really good master planning. And we spent $300,000 of our taxpayer, of our taxpayers' money. We spent a lot of money. And to me, this is a perfect example where they're the intercess, the intercessor here with the understanding of what we want to do from a long-term, broad perspective, macro perspective, steps in and says, all right, rather than you spending $300,000, I'm going to go contract that out. I'm going to spend $100,000 of your money, and I'm going to use vendors under my purview that I know are going to execute what I believe you want done. And it's going to be tied to the, the global strategy, not a very linear strategy, which is what you presented. You presented a very linear strategy. You need a global strategy. I've got that, I've got the expertise to do that. But I'm instead of paying $300,000, I'm going to go hire a vendor for $100,000. And I'll get paid to do that, obviously. I'm not going to charge you $200,000, I'm not going to charge you $100,000. I don't know what the contract actually says in terms of what the fee for services would be because there's a distinction between hourly and between tasks. But for me, that's an incredible value for the city, just on a, just straight-up dollar perspective, like somebody more sophisticated, smarter, better, and in that world is spending our money in a, in a better manner than we would spend it. And I think that, just as a very, very small example. More importantly than that, though, is that it's tied to the global strategy of what we're trying to achieve on the macroeconomic development plan, the 20-year plan, with someone who has the sophistication and worldview of what we want to get done to done that, to do that. And we were talking about this earlier. We have a very intricate, elegant economic development strategy that is going to be very difficult to execute, almost impossible to replicate, and is not the same challenges that our sister cities of Sandy Springs, Milton, Johns Creek, or Alpharetta are engaged in or will be engaged in. We have a much different challenge. And, uh, it's, you, we can't simply just say, hey, let's go hire an economic development director, and by the way, get two more people on staff and go execute. That would be naive, foolish, and a waste of money, and we wouldn't get jack done. And so we really have to bring in a world-class vendor, for lack of a better term, to help us execute our strategy. So yes, and, and multi, multi-pieces of this, to your point, could be negotiating on a piece of real estate here, right? At the same time, could be working on the parking garage strategy, right? Maybe one parking garage, maybe two, maybe three. How does that work together? What's, you know, all the, all the analysis that goes into that? Like, those are resources that don't exist within a city government. And it would be foolhardy for, for us to expect us to be very good at doing that.
I agree. So one of the things, not to disparage our, our predecessors, but, but we have a holistic strategy. This, this mayor and council has, had, before my time, you guys had started this, obviously, but it's a holistic strategy. And so the only alternative to doing this is to do a point-solution kind of approach. You know, I need this person to do this one, I need this person to do this one. It's very, very hard to keep those from-
Cluckey.
-meeting each other and coming and being able to pull off a whole, whole strategy. So, uh, this is a much better approach for the scope of strategy that we're trying to pull off than doing on a point-solution basis. So completely agree with that.
Councilmember Beeson?
I guess conversely, that's where my hesitations lie. So I'll use the exact example that you just provided, which is, Sizemore Group was the master planners that were brought in to be able to provide the master planning services through the DDA and the RDA. Um, and they were selected again through the DDA and the RDA, which allowed some level of flexibility. And what $300,000-ish is what the city paid for it. Your example was that they would be able to contract these services, they being SEER and this being the middleman, contracting these services for $100,000. But the project management list that they provided of which contractors they would be using, Sizemore Group is the planners that they would be going to. I don't quite understand how we'd be getting a discount on Sizemore Group's services. I worry that we would be getting Sizemore Services in addition to a markup of using the middleman to contract through as opposed to just going directly through them before. So I, I guess I have some hesitations about it in the sense that it, it could operate as a point service, as Councilmember Sells said. It could also operate in some ways either as a pass-through or as an entity that's going to be providing a markup on top of already, um, high-quality, but pricey services. So I worry about the increase in cost. I do have questions, though, from Mr. Leatherman.
Can I answer?
Yes, you may.
So I would say, let me give, so obviously, do I think that this vendor is a more sophisticated negotiator than myself? Yes. Do I think that this vendor is a more, has a, has a, has a greater vehicle of approach in terms of understanding the cost of all those pieces and being able to negotiate from that perspective better than our, our city leadership? Yes. So to your point, I would have an expectation that, yes, the numbers would come in dramatically lower. It also would be better in terms of refining the scope of work. So like, when I came in and said, or we came in and said, our ability to articulate the scope of work was not as elegant as, for example, the vendors would be. They'd say, look, here's the global view, here's exactly what I want you to do. So I, to me, two pieces there, I would say, just from just a dollar savings perspective. But let me give you another example, Sarah, for why this is so important. So we've had a deal here, the West Alley Hotel Project, right? It's been alive for eight years, right? Now, I don't want to disparage anybody, okay? But that was negotiated through some smart people and some people that maybe weren't as, don't have as much acumen about understanding deals. But they negotiated that from a local level. And the amount of dollars that they gave away of city, of our money, residents' taxpayer money, from not understanding that a 20-year abatement doesn't make sense in the marketplace, particularly in a piece of property that doesn't need leverage, doesn't be, be negotiated on, highly sought after, right? A lack of understanding of a worldview of what you have in your economy, what you have to offer, and the value of it, and understanding the scarcity of properties that we have. And yet, we negotiated a 20-year abatement. Not us, but we, the city did. And I would say this is a perfect example where the vendor would understand, because of worldview, is like, that would never, ever occur. Right? And because of a global understanding of what, what you have to offer, the tools that you have, like, part of the ED strategy is, one, learning how to vet deals, learning how to vet developers, learning how to vet money, learning how to vet opportunities. That is not something that cities are particularly good at, not something cities are particularly equipped for. But just on the abatement, just think about the amount of dollars that a 20-year abatement versus a 10-year abatement costs the citizens of, of Roswell. Not having somebody sophisticated in, in, in part of the process and managing the deal. It's just a, that's a lot of money. That makes this contract pale, by the way, in comparison, just as, that we were talking about. So sorry, that's my answer.
No reason for apology whatsoever, that's helpful. Uh, I'd be able to give, uh, a very real-world example, um, as to how it'd be applicable. Questions for Mr. Leatherman, though? Two questions. The first is, how much does the city expect to spend annually on this contract? The $2 million cap that you provided year-over-year is standard language for, uh, professional services contracts for Roswell?
Correct.
Do we expect to be spending right up to the cap of $2 million? Is this legitimately $10 million over five years? Or are you expecting, what's the ballpark range of what you're expecting to spend and how we should budget that?
Sure. I think, um, as it, as it comes through in the budgeting process, obviously, we'll be making recommendations through our ED budget. I think the, um, resources that we have available right now at that $2,000 to $3,000 to $400,000 at our current pace is, um, as Councilmember Sells or maybe the mayor pointed out, that we haven't spent the vast majority of those resources because they haven't been necessary. And I would anticipate us being very conservative in everything that we're doing, that we're issuing task orders under this contract that are specifically aligned with the goals and intent of this mayor and council as it relates to our economic development strategy. Um, as we get further along in negotiations of specific projects, we could see that amount rise. Uh, if we're doing, I'll use a master planning effort, um, that the mayor described earlier, we could spend several hundreds of thousands of dollars in a master planning effort for a specific node in our community that's driving future economic development that could be worth hundreds of millions of dollars in future tax revenue to the city of Roswell over the course of time. Um, so the return on that investment is potentially significant, but would align with the city of Roswell's goals with an ED. So it's hard to say this, on average, is exactly what we're going to do because it could surge, um, it could be, you know, $100,000 in one year and very well over $1 million the second year because of what we're working on and the success that we're seeing in our economic development strategy. But again, that would come forward in your budgeting process with a very specific goal in mind of we anticipate this level of service necessary in our ED strategy. And you're going to know that in the budgeting process, and it's going to be justified through that element as opposed to in the contract element of what we're doing now. Does that make sense?
Uh, last question on my end is, how will, which benchmarks will be used to assess performance on this contract? With most professional services contracts, the deliverables are pretty obvious. Uh, if you're an architecture firm, you provided a design. If you're an engineering firm, it's buildable and it meets codes, construction, obviously, you build a building. And something as nebulous as economic development, other than just saying like, yep, we're developing economically, how are we assessing or benchmarking their performance as it relates to if we will continue services?
I think that, from a staff perspective, I expect to see results from the work that our contractors are doing, regardless of whether they're doing an economic development relating task or they're designing a building and facility. Um, I think to Councilmember Sells' point, um, on the negotiation side, if there is better contract mechanisms that we can use, and in my notes of looking at, um, the success fee basis as an option for what I would call those nebulous elements?
Each statement of work really should, in my view-
It is.
Each statement of work should be its own reflection of the success of the project, right? Like, if you, it's not just, hey, I deliver, like, failure to me, oh, I delivered a master plan. No, 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 no. That's not, that's not what we're looking for.
I think you have to separate tasks from events.
I do, too.
Okay, so there's, there's tasks that are going to be done, and so a plan is a task. An event is closing on a large transaction of some sort.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna-
Those are quite differently compensated because you, you, the, the intensity of that timeframe is hard to overstate. When you're at the closing table trying to close on a large transaction like that.
Alan, let me give some understand, kind, let me just give them some flavor to what, so people understand kind of where you're going. Like, there's a transaction we're working on right now that this particular vendor's involved with that has a potential between $50 to $75 million of revenue to the city over the next 50 years.
Right.
Right? And not accounting for the cost of money, not accounting for time value. But just in simple terms, it has a value of roughly $50 to $75 million of revenue to the city. Okay? So what's the value to the person who puts that deal together?
I have made that pitch many a time.
Right? What's the value? And honestly, this is a pretty cheap arrangement from that standpoint, like, it really is. Because it is going to be task-oriented or billing hourly.
The other thing is, everybody always thinks they can do this. People think they can do this, but it's not easily done. It's, it is a very, very unique skill, so. And I'm not, you know, I'm not blowing sunshine up SEER's skirt.
Anybody's, right, yeah.
There's, there's certain things that are very, very difficult to do, they are intense and they have to be done quickly, and they're events and they're not tasks.
Fair enough.
Now, so, so the last thing I would say is, is that, you know, the Spartans used to bring in a general for their, for their wars, and they would bring him in. And he was hailed if he won. Well, y'all know what happened if he didn't win, right? So we can have, we will have a Spartan clause in this contract, I suppose.
Well, I figure I'm the one that should get pelted. I get pelted either way, we win or lose, I would get pelted.
His sponsor went, too, that's true.
All right. Councilmember Beeson, were you?
Yeah.
That's, I thought you had another question.
I do. I guess, given a lot of unknowns related to what we can do contractually, both questions that Councilmember Sells had asked, some other questions that I'd asked as well. And I know that you said that this is really more of a negotiation at this point beyond the award. Is this something that we would still move forward to council, giving the pending outstanding items that we don't know the answers to? Or is this something that we would hold, see what we are able to do, and it would come back to committee? And that might be more of a logistical question for Mayor Wilson or Mr. Knighton?
So, sir, Mr. Chairman, do you could-
Mayor Wilson, please.
My perspective, and I was kind of answering to, like, Alan said, look, man, I haven't had enough time to vet this. I'd like to vet this. So this is my, my suggestion to you is, I would suggest you pass it out of committee tonight. And I think there's some additions, revisions, or changes that can be made, as long as they don't cha, change the scope of the work. They can be changed, reviewed by you guys in the next two weeks, once those put in, put into the, to the, to the MSA. And then you'll have those changes, those can be entirely public, right? You can say, disclose what the changes are publicly. And then when it comes to council in, welcome, you're welcome, in 13 days, then you have that time to have any, again, full consideration, full conversation, full debate, and make a decision up or down on the vote.
Yeah, and, and this isn't really, we're not making an economic decision today, per se.
No.
So my, I'll give you my red line probably by tomorrow morning, right? So I, I know the things that I would want to see in it.
Yeah.
So, you know, the, other than that, I don't think there's any risk whatsoever in, in advancing, personally.
Councilmember Hall?
And just so that I'm, I'm tracking along with everybody's concerns, I think one of them is maybe, and I don't know that this is altering the MSA much, but, but maybe defining more the SOWs or how those will be defined, or, you know, if there's going to be two basic types of SOWs, task-oriented and, and, and the other event-oriented and, and how, how those will be treated. So maybe it's just more clarity and easier for everybody to follow.
That's a good point, so the timing of the period of activity versus some other means of impact.
Yep, I've got that in my notes.
Councilmember Beeson?
I, I understand the timeline proposed by Mayor Wilson and understand the willingness from others to want to move forward. I, I guess I just still have a lot of hesitations. Agree with Councilmember Sells, if it's a lot to digest. It's not to say that I, I have not read it previously. Mayor Wilson is quite well aware, as well as staff members, as I've been peppering them ceaselessly with questions for a couple of days now. I'm just not at the point where I'm ready to move forward on this, mainly because we'd never have done a contract like this before. We've done requests for qualifications for professional services contracts. But looking at the scope of work and how broad it is related to economic development, which again is very nebulous in my head and difficult to wrap my head around, I would feel more comfortable if we came back to committee because I think anytime we get into a council meeting, it's not a conducive environment like this where we can have more conversation-based approach, where we can actually, to use Mayor Wilson's, uh, trademarked term, solutioneer within the confines, it's hard on the dais. And I think that's when we start going down the rabbit hole. But I understand if others are ready to move forward.
I would definitely, I would definitely agree with you, Sarah, that if you go to, if this comes out of committee tonight successfully and it goes to council and you're, you're still having this conversation, then I would tell you, push it back at the council. I, I'm like, I'm with you, like, this is, for lack of a better term, in my view, this is where the solutionaring begins so that the process can be improved before it gets to the council, before it gets to the dais. And, um, um, to your point, if you're still having these kind of conversations, if you pass it tonight, two, 13 days from now, then obviously I would recommend that you say, push it back and defer it, right? I don't think that there's any huge, uh, forgive me, red lines. There are some revisions, additions, and changes, and some clarifications that need to be made. But the, there is nothing that says, oh, I got to have a knee-jerk, forgive me for that terminology. I need to say no because I don't get this or I'm not down with this. I, this is, this, this thing's been in the process for months.
Yes.
It's a, it's, it was, went out for a public bid.
Correct.
It was incredibly public, and there were three bidders. And one bidder got chosen by senior leadership based upon certain criteria. And what this is now is presenting that process and the criteria to the council and mayor and saying, we'd like to move forward on it. And I think what's hearing the council say, and embarrassing, awesome, let's do that, but let's make some- but let's make some additions, revisions, and clarifications on that. And that's what I'm hearing, but don't stop, just don't stop the process because this process has been in the work for months. And my understanding is you guys are ready to move forward on it, right? Senior leadership's ready to move forward on it.
Correct.
Because you have a desire to move forward on it from a standpoint of your timing and getting things done. So my recommendation would be is move it out of committee and go to work on the things you want to clarify, change, revise.
Councilmember Johnson.
I have a question about the increase into the $100,000 limit. Is that just to make the job more efficient?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you know, what we find, especially in, in the economic development world, but with a lot of our professional services, the, the ability to move quickly on items that have already been approved in the budget is the intent behind this change that we're recommending for this contract. That we already have items from an economic development strategy that have been approved, that have been allocated. And to come back through the process that takes about 30 days, sometimes 45, sometimes 60, depending on how long that process may take, can slow us down. And from an economic development perspective, that has real risk. A 30-day window, 45-day window, to have something approved just to go into a property negotiation, for example, or a master planning work has, has real risk from our perspective in the economic development realm that we're working in.
So this would be like, to dumb down for me, let's say there's a budget $500,000 a year, task order 50,000, task order 50,000, task order 50,000, task order 350,000. The 350,000 will come to us, or let's say 400,000, that it will come to us because it's over the 100,000.
Correct.
And we would have to add a budget amendment because we're over the 500,000.
Correct.
So there's, a lot of this comes back to council.
Yes, sir.
Just want to make that very clear, that this is in a blank check for $2 million for, correct?
That's correct, yes. Mayor Wilson, I'm sorry.
No, David, no, I think that's very, that's, to your point, it's got to be appropriated in the budget first.
Right.
Which means it has to be voted on and approved by council, first, first off, right? Exactly. You can't, the dollars can't come from nowhere just because there's a contract.
And what happens if council, because in 20 some odd months, four of us are up for reelection and we're all gone and council funds it to $0, what happens to the contract then?
If we don't cancel the contract, the contract would essentially sit idle with no task orders because staff would not have the authority to issue a task order under the contract because there's no funding source available to it.
A new, a new council and mayor, if you do not want to continue this contract, you cancel it essentially.
Both notice the vendor and cancel it and they can also unfund it.
Yeah.
Yes.
My recommendation, I would like to see the NDA, the, I like to, I would like to maybe see that.
Language.
Language in committee. I'm not, I won't vote no tonight because I would be for it, but I would like to maybe just give it more committee time.
Councilmember Hall.
I think we've had a robust discussion and everybody and staff understands everybody's concerns. Sarah's had numerous conversations, as she said already, and I think two weeks' time will be ample time. And Alan indicated that he'll have his red line by tomorrow. Not going to hold you to it, but, so, I mean, if you want to share your red lines.
Don't do that.
Red lines with everybody if we want to add in, but I, I'd be prepared to motion to move this forward, given the fact that we've had a robust discussion. I think we understand what our questions are, what we need clarification for, and I think two weeks would be ample time to get those addressed. And, and if not, we could defer the item at that time.
All right, that's a motion, Councilmember Hall.
Unless anybody has any other questions. Motion to move it forward with the understanding that council members will work with staff to make the changes.
Motion by Councilmember Hall. Do we have a second by Councilmember Morethland? Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of moving this item forward? All opposed? All right, unduly noted. Thank you very much. All right, item number four under finance, I will ask that this item be postponed until the next appropriate committee meeting. This is something that came prematurely and so I apologize for that, but it's something that needs some further information and discussion. All right? If, if council is agreement, okay?
Agreeable.
Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll defer item number four until the next appropriate committee meeting. Under, we didn't need to vote on that. Under Recreation and Parks, item number five, consideration to award a contract in the amount of $247,715.92 with a total budget authorization of $284,873.31 to complete the Mimosa Hall second floor improvement project. Mr. Malone.
Good evening. Thank you. The first item tonight is in regards to Mimosa Hall, the second floor renovations. As you'll see up on the screen, this is just a quick overview of the floor plan of the second floor of Mimosa Hall. The city obtained the landmark museum status for Mimosa Hall in May of 2023, which actually marked the first such designation within the state in the last 15 years. This designation enabled the city to initiate the design and engineering phases of this project, which adhered to specific requirements associated with the status. Earlier this year, essential fire and life safety elements were completed, including the installation of new strobes, pool stations, fire extinguishers, and a new fire panel. As we look at this project advancing into its next phase, that will involve floor stabilization and refinishing, renovating of two bathrooms, and other cosmetic items. I've notated just a real quick, I know this is kind of a little bit of an obscure photo, but this is the engineered design where you'll see those circular red items. Those are areas where the floor, second floor of Mimosa Hall is sagging. There has to be some floor stabilization to come in to reinforce those floor joists as well as come back and renovate the floors. Upon completion of this phase, we would expect to obtain the certificate of occupancy for the second floor, which would allow for us to start renting that space and moving up into that second floor area. The anticipated 120 days for the project completion from a timeline perspective. Happy to answer any questions about that project.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Questions, comments? Mayor Wilson?
Well, we would be remiss if we didn't congratulate this council and the senior leadership team and Stephen and Jeff and Mr. Knighton for, this has been, working on this second floor of Mimosa has been around for a long, long time and sat there with a rope forever. I'm being a little facetious when I say forever, but I mean, damn near years, like five, six, seven years it's been around. So thanks to this council, getting it appropriated, figuring out how to get it done in budgeting, thank you Christine, and the wisdom of using zero-based budgeting and finding money and making this happen. This dream for a lot of people, which is what it is, is to get this fantastic, beautiful home fully activated, both inside and out, which you're going to talk about later, some other pieces. And so it really took a lot of excellent fiscal work by this council to figure out how to get the money. Because this, a lot of people talked about it, this council got it done and Stephen, your team got it done. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, further questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Morethland, and then we'll go to Councilmember Beeson. Councilmember Morethland.
Congratulations on seeing this through. I know it's a weight off your shoulders.
Thank you, sir. Just as recognition, I'd like to recognize all the staff in the back of the room who were here specifically tonight for this item because of the extensive work that went into this.
Will you recognize them? Tell, tell us who they are.
Absolutely. So we have, right here, we have our historic asset manager, Deana Bush, our park services manager, Kyle Patterson, one of our historic assets coordinators, who also manages our new maintenance team that's out there on the historic assets, Jonathan Bradshaw, and then our deputy director, Taylor Smith.
Great, good job.
And of course, our illustrious past director, Jeff Leatherman.
This is okay, you go right up. You only got it done because you got him out of the way.
Nobody puts baby on the corner? I have a quick question for you.
Councilmember Beeson.
Yes, ma'am.
So I see the, obviously we budgeted for this last, at the beginning of last fiscal year. So we were prepared.
Not calendar year.
Yes, fiscal year. Coming through. We're still in, we're still in FY '24. Looking at the total dollar amount, is there any funds that are being contributed, contributed by Friends of Mimosa to offset any of these costs, either with this project or the project you're getting ready to present?
At this time, no, ma'am.
Okay. Are there other projects that we are foreseeing them budgeting through their fundraising? Or is this completely, is the maintenance of the building itself completely on the city?
Can I ask you a dumb question?
I'm, I'm on a roll with the dumb questions.
No, no, no. Why are you asking about Friends of Mimosa?
I, I guess because the purpose in my mind of these Friends of, insert historic home, because they do host many fundraisers, is to offset some of the cost that the city incurs to maintain these houses. The historic homes are not, they're beautiful, but they ain't cheap. And I do appreciate Mimosa Hall and all that it brings culturally and historically to the city of Roswell. But I'm just curious based off of, I could have sworn, I know in the past that they had some funds, if not all their funds, that went towards the solar panels on the roof. I'm just curious moving forward if there will be other projects they cover.
I, the short answer is, and Stephen, you correct me if I'm even the least bit wrong, I think the short answer is no. They don't really provide any funding of any consequence. No disrespect to them. And we, they're great, great residents and great volunteers who helped to celebrate Mimosa and do a lot of wonderful things. But I think Lee can address this because she works with Friends a lot. Stephen works with Friends all the time and they certainly have a great deal of investment personally and love-wise in the, in the property. But we made a decision last year that we were going to say, look, these properties are a significant investment by the residents of Roswell. They spent, through the government of Roswell, a significant amount of money to acquire them and to keep them up. And so the short answer is, is basically the residents through the government of Roswell are maintaining and making all the improvements. And that's why I'm so proud of this group and I'm so proud of Director Leatherman, or former Director Leatherman's, of really founder's strategy, founder's Boulevard's strategy is, is last year this council made a decision to say that we have all these incredible properties and it's time to activate them. Because when we looked at our user, our actual usability, how many people were coming to see our historic properties, the numbers were abysmal. And so we said, look at the level of investment that we made and look at the level of ongoing investment. And I asked the council last year, I said frankly, either get into the historic asset business or get out of it. Like you got to make a choice. Like you keep spending dollars without a plan, it's time for a plan. So Jeff Leatherman came up with a great plan. Director Malone is, is beginning the implementation, the execution of that plan. And I know I'm giving you a long answer because it all comes to money. And so part of that is, is we are spending our fellow residents' money, the city of Roswell government, on a short-term, midterm, and long-term plan to activate these historic properties. Mimosa, Barrington, Bullock, Smith, Holly, and wait till you see what they do on Bullock, Bullock Avenue. So, and it's all with the process of making these much more accessible, much more usable, and yes, functionable from the standpoint of, of driving revenue for catering, wedding events. And that's, you're going to see Director Malone's, you're going to see this strategy continue to unfold itself in the short term, but the answer to your question is, solar panels, you're right. Forget the solar panel piece, you can direct, answer that better, but in terms of all this money, you're, it's your money, you're making the decision.
All right. Thank you. Any, yes, Councilmember Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Knighton. Yeah, I'm tickled to death about this. One of the top three reasons that I moved to Roswell is the historic assets. So I'm delighted about this and having a background in event planning and catering, knowing what it takes to pull off a special event, not just weddings, but other events, does take some extra space rather than just the main floor. So to have this upstairs available for whomever is renting the area out, whether it's just exclusive to the upstairs or a, a private room, or if it's a wedding party where the ceremony is there on site and then reception to follow, I'm delighted. Of course, the monetization has been a big deal for this crowd, for our mayor and council, and I have fully supported all along. We've just hired a special event salesperson, sales executive, so she's getting on board and has a stellar record. I'm delighted. I was given the honor of sitting in on the interviews of the last two people and I know we're going to kill it. And this is a vital piece. Years back, lived in Raleigh, North Carolina, and I almost only did wedding receptions in, in historic homes and bar mitzvahs. And so I'm very familiar with what the needs are and what the restrictions are. And I think this is going to be a huge benefit to really kick off that part of our economic development for our historic assets. So, so excited about this. And two, for what Friends of Mimosa does put on in their music programming, they have an, an opportunity to have some of their talent change clothes upstairs rather than in the kitchen, and they've been champs to kind of work with what we have. And so this will give them an opportunity to have some space to get changed and be prepared for their presentation and their performance. So full speed ahead. Well done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further comments or questions? All right, we'll entertain a motion regarding this item.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Hills, second by Councilmember Morethland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All right, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item number six, consideration to award a contract in the amount of $735,067.28 with a total budget authorization of $882,080.74 to complete the Mimosa Hall driveway improvement project. Mr. Malone.
Yes, thank you, sir. So heading right into that continued conversation of activating Mimosa Hall and those grounds for rental opportunities and event space opportunities, this is a project that is simultaneous to the second floor. This project involves the renovation of the pea gravel driveway adjacent to Mimosa Hall. You'll see here in the picture, the outlay of that potential driveway. The existing driveway does not provide adequate width to accommodate public safety access or allow for passage of box trucks during larger rental events. The project entails replacing the existing six-foot pea dry, pea gravel driveway with a 16-foot wide concrete and paved driveway. This upgrade will enhance access for both emergency vehicles and pedestrian foot traffic from Bullock Hall, or sorry, Bullock Avenue to Mimosa Hall. Additional components of this project include the installation of new lighting, enhanced ADA accessibility, and the creation of a circular turnaround area behind the building. This turnaround area will accommodate larger emergency and event vehicles. The timeline for completion of this project is 180 days. Additionally, it will run concurrently with Mimosa's second floor project. This will help to minimize the overall construction timeline and mitigate the impact on the site overall. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. We've had some concern from residents and Friends of Mimosa and other folks about the trees and the impact on some of the, there's a very large magnolia tree that I think is the, been noted as the largest in the state. Can you speak to the impact and how that is being mitigated?
Absolutely. It's a great question. The first is when we went through the design phase, when we originally started this project, the original scope of work based on what was provided from our fire marshal's office was a 20-foot wide driveway. So initially, knowing that we had substantial specimen trees on property that we wanted to try to protect, we went through the process of getting that width down to 16 foot. So that saved four feet of width, which actually allows us to kind of weave through those trees a little bit better with this project so that it doesn't, doesn't impact any of those major specimen trees. Additionally, we've worked into the scope of work with the contractor that there has to be root barrier protection, which means that the trees that are there, that potentially have roots that are traversing that driveway and what will be there, will have some root barrier protections as part of the project itself. Additionally, what we'll do is a third piece of that is, we'll bring in a third-party arborist that does not have any relationship to this contractor, that will have to evaluate what that means and then provide the contractor what work needs to be done to highly protect those specimen trees.
Just to follow up on that, is there any guarantees or warranties that the trees won't die as a result of this, like in the next 24 months?
Unfortunately, there's just no guarantees. There would no, be no guarantee from the contractor or the arborist that any work in and around that area would not impact them.
Are there questions, comments? Yes, Councilmember Hills?
Um, yes, I want to say again, kudos, congratulations, and giddy up. Love the underground utilities. Thank you for hearing me and others about the lighting, which is extremely important, and back to hosting events that will actually generate money for the city. I know only too well what kind of trailers, box trucks, large vehicles that would need to come in and out, whether it's for the musical productions that the Friends of Mimosa put on regularly, or if it's for a bar mitzvah, a corporate event. I think everybody knows we're a CEO town, so once we have more hotels, we will be entertaining all sorts of folks here, and they'll, Lord knows what they may bring in, have private presentations for their board, who knows? But thank you for all of that. And I would like to say that, you know, and looking at the, the map and how this would have a turnaround in the back, plays in beautifully, I've been in the Sharetz recently for Founder's Park planning and talking through some of those opportunities and how that will help generate more money, but tie in Holly Hill to the back of Mimosa, across over to Bullock, and that this is a starting foundation that plays into a lot of different scenarios that we can take advantage of when we make the final stamp of approval of how that's going to all work together. So this is just one more puzzle piece that isn't even in the Founder's Park budget, although we do have fund money that we can put toward that and a multitude of other opportunities, even through grants that we haven't captured yet. So I think this is a great win. Can't wait to see this underway. I think this is what, 160 days?
180 days, I believe.
So we'll, we'll get the upstairs open and running, and then this will be going on concurrently, hopefully, and then finish up a little bit after the upstairs. And, and again, we will be ready to take those deposits and final payments for folks that want to enjoy one of our treasures here in Roswell. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Wilson?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Anybody else? Director Malone, sorry, I know, I don't think you have this answer ready, and if you do, it's unbelievable. So, it's kind of going to show the commitment of you got you, all in the leadership team and the council, really, which, how much money do you think of this $1.4 million project? It's a $1.4 million project, correct?
Correct.
How much of that would you attribute to third-party arborist, tree protection, underground root protection, going from a 16-foot, going from a 20-foot to a 16-foot, but having to amend the path, et cetera, et cetera? That's a lot of extra cost built in, right? That, where some of these trees may survive and some may not, right? And ultimately, if you had, if you built a driveway, we'd say, hey, you've built a whole bunch of new trees, right? Because trees, because we like our trees, 100%. But how much is this project? Because this is sometimes where we, you know, get very, very difficult lines that end up costing a lot of money and really don't even sometimes ultimately achieve the objective, and nobody comes out happy. So I'm just curious, like, what did the third-party, what's the third-party arborist going to cost, which could plan on your part? Underground root protection, good plan on your part? Having to amend the route to protect some of the specimen trees? What's that cost us?
I would be unable to answer that question right now, sir. I'd have to go back and look at that.
So, the point should be made, because I hear sometimes, this is a perfect example where the city council and the senior leadership team are being incredibly responsive, thoughtful, and hearing what advocates are saying in the city. And making a decision to spend money in a significant way. That's why I was curious. Do you know the answer? Because I know, I didn't expect you to know the answer off the top of it. It's a significant amount of money. It's also a significant amount of time. It's also a significant amount of time going into it and coming out of it. And it's one of the things, it's like, I don't know how much longer I'm going to be mayor, but just as a regular person, you know, and when you learn of these kind of things and you see that there are groups, right, or people that are driving decision-making, right? And I would argue, I don't know if this is the best decision for the city, right? Because I know what the fire department wanted to put in there, right? I think I know what the practical operations folks wanted to put in there. And yet, that decision got amended because there are a lot of people that have a lot of voices and a lot of, a lot of input into the process. And they're not elected. They're not elected, but they impacted the elected thinking process, which is fine. That is part of the process. But when it costs money, I'm not so sure that the outcome is better, because I'm not so sure it wouldn't have been better to build a 20-foot driveway and put trees up and down that pathway, right? I, one of the people, one of the reasons people moved to this great city is because we do love our trees and we protect our trees. But trees are like everything else. They have shelf lives. That's why you plant, that's why corporations have to replant trees all the time, they're in the tree business. So I sometimes think that we need to be more clear from a senior leadership perspective and from a council perspective about clearly making decisions and how they impact the dollars and how they impact the projects. Because frankly, I get a little tired, and this is how the city was run in the past, where unelected people who could had advocacy were changing the decision-making through the elected body because they're putting pressure on the elected body, which changed the decision-making and the senior staff leadership. And I don't, I'm not telling you that I have the answer for this, but when I know that I start gerrymandering a project based upon interest, special interest, I think hard questions have to be asked. And I know the level of, I know what you put up with. I know how difficult your job is to navigate around a lot of this. And I know it's up for us as elected officials to stand up for you and say, no, what's the best thing to do for the city? Because to me, that's the only thing I care about. What's the best thing to do for the city? Not what does so-and-so think is the best city, but I want to be informed by the senior leadership team, and I want to be informed by my colleagues at city council, and I want to know what is the best thing to do. And too often, in politics, and too often, it gets impacted by special advocacy and special interest. Passionate, loving, loyal, and care very much about the subject matter. But that's one of the things that's happened in politics. Special interest, call it that term, impacts decision-making, where the reality is, from a macro perspective, we're responsible, I'm responsible for making the best decision for the city of Roswell. And that includes expenditures, and that includes the, the nature of the project. So, I don't know the answer to this question, but I do, I'd love to know, how much more money am I costing the taxpayers by, right, having a third-party arborist, putting underground root protection, changing the route of the path, minimizing the trail, minimizing the original structure of how the pathways are going to go? Because this is going to come up again and again and again. And unless the council and the senior leadership team has clarity about the direction of what we're going and sticking to that plan, then we're going to amend things because a small special interest group wants us to do it. And I don't think that's the right course for the city. That's my two cents.
Thank you. All right, thank you, sir. Any further questions, comments regarding this item? I'm sorry, Councilmember Morethland? Okay, all right.
My soapbox, Willie, I know. I don't blame you. Turn it off, baby.
Councilmember Hills?
Actually, I will thank you, Mr. Knighton. I will add just an anecdotal note. Years ago, before we renovated our home, I had the city, the city, no, not the city attorney, sorry. I talked to you about something else. The city arborist come out, come out to my house because we wanted to put an addition on the back of our home. And I love oak, I love oak trees, I love oak furniture, and this oak was humongous. And I hated to ask, but I wanted to know if I could move it and what, what that would, I mean, if I could get rid of it, if we could cut it down. It was a painful question, but anyway. So the arborists came out and said, it's, broken up a ticket, it's $6,000. And I was like, wow, $6,000 to take a tree down? And he says, no, actually, that's the fine you pay, and then you can do whatever the heck you want to do. Then you have to hire somebody to take the tree down. And I was like, well, that, pulled the plug on that. So fast forward about a year later, it was almost to the date, to the month, had friends over and in the hammock, one of the little girls, one of my friends', little friends', my daughter's friends was over in the hammock, and a tree limb off of that tree fell off. It was larger than my Suburban. So, I was, of course, relieved that it didn't hit the young lady, but, so I have the arborist come back out, and he climbs up and looks inside. This was a healthy tree. He promoted, you know, gave blessings the year before, $6,000 to take down a healthy tree. He said, here, you can take it down, here's your permit. And I said, well, how much is that? And he said, it's nothing. The tree is being eaten out from the inside by carpenter ants. And when I got on the ladder, you could see a hole bigger than my leg. So my point to all that is that an old, I counted the rings, it was 111 or 112 rings on it, because it sat on my front yard for a while. A tree can go south when it hits a certain age at a moment's notice, and nature knows. I mean, the carpenter ants had a welcome mat coming in. So these trees, that, is it a tulip poplar? It's a poplar of some kind. Well, that's, that's a tulip poplar, saucer magnolia. So yes, that tree and then the other one. I mean, I'm not saying it's going to die, but, I mean, we aren't going to know if the, if the driveway is going to make that happen or not. It could be Mother Nature, anyway.
You said it a lot better than I did.
No, I wouldn't know where you were headed, but there are other forces of nature.
You said it a lot better than I did. Like, yeah, you're spending a lot of money to save a tree. And like, we all love the trees. It's like, nobody doesn't love a tree. We love these trees, they're amazing, but we're spending a lot of money, spend a lot of time, a lot of energy, I mean, a lot of money. A lot of money. And it's because there's some passionate people involved, they're saying, they're telling you what to do, 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 right? Telling Randy what to do, telling David what to do, tell, and if you don't like it, doggone it, I'm going to come after you, I'm going to attack you on social media, and I'm going to activate my 150 people to come after you. That's what happens. And you say, oh, I'm just another resident, I don't, I'm getting tired of getting attacked. Okay. And then you got these poor guys, like poor Director Malone, he's got to stand in the middle. Council tells me to do one thing. The, the advocacy group tells me to do one thing, right? So, this is a perfect example, are we really doing the right thing for the city because some people are charged up about it? I'm not so sure we are.
All right?
I'm tempting you, aren't I, Will?
Yes, Councilmember Morethland?
Motion to move this forward.
All right, we have, we have a motion by Councilmember Morethland and a second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. We will, we will, we will make a motion to adjourn this committee meeting, and then we'll pause for two minutes for the next committee. Motion by Councilmember, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, please.
Just before we adjourn this meeting for the next meeting, I'd like to recognize our colleague, David, Councilmember Johnson, whose birthday is today, and he's spending it with us at this committee meeting. So I propose to sing "Happy Birthday." Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear David. Happy birthday to you.
All right, with that, we will entertain a motion of adjournment for this committee meeting. Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Beeson. All in favor? All right, we'll reconvene in about, two to three minutes, three minutes. Good evening, welcome again to the Public Safety and Public Works Committee meeting for April 9, 2024. Our elected body, Mayor Kurt Wilson, Councilmember Christine Hall, Councilmember Alan Sells, Councilmember David Johnson, Councilmember Sarah Beeson, Councilmember G. Lee Hills, Councilmember William Morethland. I'm Randy Knighton, City Administrator, joined by City Attorney David Davidson and Executive Assistant to Counsel, Michelle Miller. The purpose of committee meetings is for the city departments to convey information to the mayor and city council to discuss initiatives listed on the published agenda and provide updates of vital information of city government operations. By ordinance, committee consists of mayor and council as well as the city administrator. And this is a public meeting, of course, but not a public hearing, and therefore, while the meeting is open to the public, we do not take public comments or questions during committee meetings. They're received at our regularly scheduled city council meetings, the seventh and fifth Monday of each month at 7:00 PM, as well as fifth Monday in open forum. We do always encourage residents to reach out to us for any information or questions that you have. Our staff and talent is available to provide that information to you. We also encourage everyone to utilize roswell365.com for a calendar of events and the web service portal, the Roswell app, to report issues or concerns. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the Public Safety and Public Works Committee meeting of March 12, 2024. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Councilmember Hills, second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you, passes unanimously. We'll note, for the record, we, under Public Safety Fire, we do not have any action items for the evening. And under Public Safety Police, item number two is listed on the agenda, consideration to purchase a 2015 Spartan Command Center mobile command vehicle and budget amendment. Chief Conroy?
All right, good evening. The Roswell Police Department recommends purchasing a mobile command vehicle to aid in police operations. This would assist in incident management for all public safety events, planned and unplanned. When I arrived in Roswell about five years ago, I was a little surprised that a city our size did not have a mobile command vehicle, especially given the number of city events that we have, such as alive in Roswell, Christmas tree lighting, Fourth of July event, that we did not have a vehicle that was in place for such an event. Since I've been here, we've included this in our budget every year, and the budget item for this year for a new mobile command vehicle is $885,675 and would take approximately 24 months to order and build. City of Lawrenceville is selling a slightly-used 2015 Spartan Command Center mobile command vehicle with very low mileage. It's just under 5,800 miles presently. Staff from the Roswell Police Department, fleet maintenance, and IT inspected and evaluated this vehicle, and the consensus is that it would meet the needs of our city. It would require some minor upgrades, repairs, and maintenance. The Police Department recommends making an offer to the city of Lawrenceville for the purchase of this vehicle in the amount of $350,000. The funding would come from $175,000 from federal justice funds, $175,000 from the school zone speed funds. As I mentioned, this vehicle is in need of some minor repairs, maintenance, and technology upgrades. Examples are, it needs a new set of tires, which is approximately $8,000, re-decaling the vehicle, the computers onboard are 10 years old, and IT says they could do memory upgrades so they could handle the current software. And there's some broken vents and some minor things on the awnings that need to be repaired and replaced. So part of our recommendation is to take an additional $30,000 from the federal justice funds for those repairs, maintenance, and upgrades as needed. And I'm open for any questions.
All right, thank you, Chief Conroy. Any questions or comments for Chief Conroy? Councilmember Hills?
Thank you. This may save us from having to listen to this pitch again for every budget cycle. So, I'm just messing with you, chief. So on this, I know what you mentioned, tree lighting, Fourth of July, and a lot, yeah, our typical live, eight of those for the year. Are there other events? Because I know we've hosted music festivals, we've had private, or not private, I guess, events that are, that are larger than, say, a social event at Mimosa Hall, or maybe it would be something large at one of our historic assets. Is this the kind of thing that would automatically go if, if there's a trigger number of people expected in attendance? Or is it, is this, and I'm talking about in addition to things that you already have in mind, which, maybe I could just ask you that, what else?
So it would go to city-sponsored, city-approved events that are city-sponsored. Events where they hire off-duty officers. I guess we could look at making that an available option, that it would have to be rented and they would have to staff. option, that it would have to be rented, and they would have to staff that vehicle for the events. It, of course, also would be used for any public safety event, homicides, major crimes, or major weather-related incidents that occur.
And what about, like, Youth Day Parade? That's a huge event. Would it be somewhere midway? Or would it be called out for that?
So, yeah, that's where our command post for the Youth Day would be, where we would set it up is, we'd have to determine where best to set it up. But that's where everything that coordinates those events comes out of the mobile command center. That's where your incident commander would sit. So, just think of Alive in Roswell, because that's where we've all seen it. And, Mayor, I hate that you missed the, the week that I convinced them to let us borrow it for the Alive in Roswell. But the incident commander, Lieutenant Crawford, right now, he sits in a tent and a table. He would have this command bus. That's where he would be. That's where Chris from Parks and Recs would sit, because she manages the event from the, the project's standpoint. That's where we know that the commanders of the event would be. Any question, you go to the command, and that's where you ask, hey, we, this is what we need, and this is where we need to move resources. So, that's the heartbeat of any incident that we would have in the city.
That's good. Thank you.
Councilmember Beeson?
So, to reiterate, it's not a militarized vehicle, so to speak. It's really a mobile office for where we can deploy staff and resources and house them with things like IT and basic amenities.
Correct. I included some photos, and I wish I knew how to pull them out of the computer, but.
Michelle's got you.
Michelle can, can help me out. You will see, it is very utilitarian. It is, it also functions as a backup 911 center. That's actually how Lawrenceville, that's how their chief discovered they had the vehicle. They were using it for 911 upgrades one day, and he came out and said, oh, I didn't know that we had a command vehicle.
And then the other question that I had, too, was, can you describe for the others, how many police, individual police vehicles this replaces when we're doing a road closure? What's it equivalent to in terms of squad cars?
So, where we staged it for that first Alive in Roswell, I think we have six or seven police vehicles that are blocking that intersection, and this came and blocked the intersection. There, you can see the computer racks. That's the outside of the vehicle. If I scroll up a little bit, that's the computer racks and all the electronics for the radio equipment, and that is one half of the vehicle, where it has the workstations. And then the top picture is the back half, what we call, that's the command portion. That's where your commander would sit. And they have TV monitors, as well as all the whiteboards to track any staff that's on, on for the events.
Councilmember Hall?
Just a curiosity question, or a couple of them. So, is the vehicle a hardened vehicle that could be used by SWAT?
So, it is not a hardened, it's not a ballistic vehicle, but it would be utilized for SWAT for the commanders to sit in. When you have a command post like this, you put it at a safe distance.
Okay.
For commanders, but no, it is, it is not bulletproof.
And so, it'd be used by detectives at crime scenes and things like that?
Correct. Yeah, detectives could use it. They could use one half of that for interviews. When we have a SWAT situation, you would have the SWAT commanders at one half, and then the hostage negotiator sitting in the other half. Right now, they both stand out in the parking lot under an awning or under the, the overhang of the Tahoe police vehicle.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
You have an ETA on when, you know, if it's approved in two weeks at the council and when we would have it in our hands?
So, great question. This will go on the, the 22nd mayor and city council meeting. Then Lawrenceville has the same procedures we do. Their mayor and city council would have to approve acceptance of the, the offer and authorize the purchase. Then it would be just like any purchase. It could be made as soon as we could hand them a check. So, theoretically, it could be here for the mayor, Alive in Roswell, if that was your question. Yes.
Councilmember Beeson?
Last question for me. For a point of clarity, none of the funds used for this is coming out of, or coming out of our general funds or a budget request. The federal justice funds and the school zone speed funds can only be used for police purchases. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further, yes, Councilmember Moreland?
If you remember back, the first time we, we ever spoke about mobile command units, and I asked for mounted cavalry, you told me no, but this is what you had always asked for. I'm happy to see this coming forward. So, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Further questions or comments? Seeing none?
Did you say you wanted horses?
It is budget season.
You ask for everything.
All right. We'll entertain a motion. A motion by Councilmember Beeson, second by Councilmember Hills. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, item number three is listed under Public Works. Consideration to award a contract with Federal ECLLC for the Branch Valley Stormwater Pipe Lining Project in an amount not to exceed $471,040 and a budget amendment. Mr. Watson?
I was hoping I could ask for mobile command units. That's pretty exciting. Mine's not quite as exciting, but the purpose of this project is to clean and restore approximately 716 linear feet of various-sized corrugated metal pipe. That's the CMP pipe that we've talked about often. The city of Roswell advertised this project. We had four bids from our standby, or pre-qualified contractors that ranged from about $471,000 to almost $800,000, with the low bid being submitted by Federal EC. We, staff recommends awarding the contract to Federal EC.
All right. Questions regarding this item or comments from Mr. Watson? Any, yes, Councilmember Hall?
On prior projects like this, did you group them for some savings, or is that a different type of project?
We would, we tried to group any sort of lining projects that we can. This one is not one. This is kind of, this is probably the size of a project that works well. When you group and you can get to approximately this cost, this project is just a little bit more complicated, so it was only one project. So, we would try, but this one, we did not.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none. We'll entertain a motion. Motion by Councilmember Sales, second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All right. Thank you. That passes unanimously. And then the next item that we have on our agenda is item number four under Public Works. Consideration to award a contract to Jericho Design Group for the design services for public safety facilities in an amount not to exceed $2 million per year. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Knight. So, last year, Environmental Public Works and other staff within the city went through a very extensive RFQ process to identify an AE, architecture, engineering, and design firm to support for public safety facilities design related to the bonds. We had, not only did we review all the proposals, but we interviewed all the firms, and we had shortlisted three of the firms. Last year, we awarded a contract to one of those firms, but based on the current and projected needs of the city, staff recommends awarding a contract to the next highest firm, which is Jericho Design Group, so that we can have more capacity to get some stuff done. Take any questions?
All right, Mr. Watson. All right. Any, any questions for Mr. Watson? All right. Yes, Councilmember Sales?
So, like the SEER contract, this is basically an MSA that we would do SOWs against. Is that fair?
I'd like to separate the two contracts. This is a design services contract, so this is specifically for design services. There is not an amount that we are giving to Jericho. It's got a, it's up to $2 million, but for us, it's, it's whatever is in the budget. And so, there would be scope through, and it would be specifically for design.
Right, but it'd be a statement of work for that particular thing?
It'd be a statement of work for a specific project. This is a little bit more narrow.
Gotcha.
And bond, bond money for this?
There's one minor change. It, it's not for just bonds. It could be for public safety facilities. So, for example, City Hall has a public safety, has a public safety component, so they could also do design work with City Hall.
Clarification. Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right. Any further comments or questions? Seeing, yes, ma'am. Councilmember Hall?
Is this also a five-year contract that renews every year, or how is this one?
That's correct.
So, all of our contracts are basically $2 million MSA type of thing?
All of them are not necessarily $2 million. The five-year, it gets complicated. It could be either three-year or five-year. We are trying to go to standardize it to a five-year. That's been staff recommendations. Not all of the on-calls or standby contracts are at a $2 million, but on some of these ones, where there's design or there's, it's better to have $2 million. I don't know if you're.
So, just, we're going to see more of these coming through?
This would be a more common way of doing it.
Okay, thank you.
Past practice has been $1 million in three years, but it's.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion. Motion by Councilmember Sales, second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And that does conclude the Public Safety and Public Works Committee meeting for April 9, 2024. I'll entertain a motion of adjournment. Motion by everybody, and motion, will, for the record, Councilmember Johnson, and then Councilmember Hills. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right.